All right, welcome everyone to the Town of Brookfield Select Board Meeting Thursday, March 20th. Please stand and pledge a flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. A reminder, a winter parking ban is in effect through April 1st. There shall be no parking on any streets between the hours of 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Vehicles in violation will be ticketed and towed at the owner's expense. Also, snow or ice removed from driveways, sidewalks, or private property shall not be plowed, shoveled, or blown across any public way, street, or roadway. And Brown, if you want to do this, sign once.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we have our fiscal year 2025-19 payroll warrant in the amount of $212,321.94. And we also have a warrant, 2025-19 accounts payable warrant in the amount of $162,206.88.
All right, budget item number, agenda item number one, fiscal year 2026 budget review.
Yes, we view each have a packet or budget in your packet, I should say, and it should really consist of two bundles. One would just be the executive summary, which is a single sheet, which is what I'll start off with. And then we have the Staples Actual Budget, which includes the budget requests that we've received to date, which is really everything except for the ambulance budget, and I will go into the rationale behind that. But I guess probably, as I said, the best place to start is with the executive summary and just kind of give us an overview, that 30,000-foot look of where we are currently. And starting at the top, you can see the revenues. We have our levy limit, our debt exclusion, and as you can see, our fiscal year 26 estimate and the variance. So for those particular items, we have approximately $251,000 more for fiscal year 26 than we would for fiscal year 25. And then right below there, you see we go into local aid, which was increased ever so slightly. Local receipts, which we, in speaking with the town accountant, Lori, she had indicated she wasn't comfortable with any increases or decreases because nothing was really showing a trend one way or another. So we decided that we would just level fund for now, but we're keeping our eye on the local receipts. And then you can see just the other charges. Bottom line is the total that's available to raise and appropriate is an increase of almost $290,000 for fiscal year 26 versus fiscal year 25. So that's the pot of money, the extra pot of money, if you will, that we have to play with. The next section down, the expenses. I broke it up into mandatory and discretionary. Mandatory is pretty much that, which is the schools. Those budgets have already been voted on by each of the respective school committees. The chances of us changing those at this point are slim in none. So as you can see, based upon the budgets that were voted by each school committee, it's an increase year over year of $155,000, or 2.73 percent. If you look at the other item under mandatory expenses, that's debt and assessments, and as its name would imply, that's our loans, our debt, principal and interest. Once again, pretty much obligations we have to spend our money on. And you see that also went up about $75,000, or 4.6 percent. So that gave us $231,000 of mandatory expenses. So you subtract that from the $290,000 or so that we had extra available. You can see we're running out of money fairly quickly. Now we come down to our discretionary expenses, and these are the budget requests, if you will, as they came in. As you can see, what I've done, just for brevity, I've kind of combined them into groupings. These groupings are consistent with what was voted for at the spreadsheet at annual town meeting. You can see general government is actually down $24,000 versus last year, year over year. Public Safety's gone up $42,000, or a little more than 4 percent. Public Works has gone up $42,000, which is actually just shy of 8 percent. Health Sanitation, Special Services, up slightly, $1,700. Culture and Recreation, same thing, up very slightly at $1,000. And the Water Department has issued a level-funded budget versus last year. So you add everything together, our total expenses, when you include the discretionary and the mandatory, those additional expenses, once again, for 26 requests over actuals that were budgeted in 25, is $295,000. So you can see a variance of about $5,000 of expenses and requests above and beyond the available revenues, which sounds encouraging, especially at a first glance. However, what it doesn't include is a very big item. And that big item is the COLA that we've discussed at least on a couple of different occasions. Down at the very bottom of the executive summary, you can see I've indicated the estimates from Lori of what the cost would be for a 2 percent COLA, two and a half, three, and 3 percent COLA. So as you can see, we would have to add that to the $5,000 or so deficit that we have. So as an example, if we use the 2.5 percent COLA, if we took the $46,000 that Lori's estimating that would cost the town, add that to the five, in order to achieve a truly balanced budget, that would be expenses, additional expenses in FY '26 versus additional revenues in FY '26, we would have to cut from our budget approximately $50,000.
Where's the new growth in all of these numbers?
New growth would actually be up in the local receipts, or excuse me, it'd be under levy on that impact here. I could pull that out. Lori has a-
Yeah, we don't have the copy of the revenue one. It was in the email.
Unfortunately, it is a-
I was pulling it up because I forgot my hard copy of the one-
Yeah, it is a bit of a, of an eye chart, but what Lori has done is for new growth, for year over year, her estimate in fiscal year 26 is $60,000.
Which was conservative.
Which is conservative, correct.
Especially given the number of programs that are out.
Right.
Do we have what it was last year?
Last year versus tax recap, it was $102,000.
I was going to say it was north of $100,000, and it's been north of $100,000 for the last five to six years.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm not sure-
Do you have that revenue sheet that you had put together? Because I could have sworn that there was actually a discernible trend in local receipts, but I didn't bring my copy. So that's shame on me.
Fortunately, I don't think I have that in this folder, but I can certainly give that to you. Because I think I had originally provided that for the advisory committee at one of our earlier meetings.
Ron, on the general government, where we're down $24,000, was the bulk of that from the assessors, from?
Well, it's actually, boy, actually, Rich, perfect segue. Say, if you want to go into the actual detailed portion of the budget, and this is where the requests are going to be. And some of it is what I'll call, I don't want to call it accounting games, because that sounds like deception, but just different accounting methods and maneuvers. Part of that is, on the very first page, you can see grant writer wages has been zeroed out. So that's $24,000 savings, but it's not really a savings, because what's happened there is that's now all been pushed over to the highway account. And that is actually going to be a topic for further discussion at next week's meeting.
Okay.
There's a lot of questions with how we want to account for that, how do we want to fund that, from which different pools? How do we want to separate the two? If you recall back, let's say probably late summer last year, when we decided upon the hybrid, the rationale was, let's come up with a hybrid hourly wage for Lindsay, because we all realized, yes, some weeks are going to be heavy on grant writing and not so heavy on admin, and the very next week might be reversed. So instead of having that fluctuation all over the place, we said, okay, let's just pay her $29 an hour, no matter what she's doing, which is that hybrid rate we had talked about. Let's just say Lori, the town accountant, is not a big fan of that. So she was suggesting we decide to perhaps pull from one account if we're going to go down that route instead of accounting for it in two different places. So as I said, that's going to be a discussion item for greater detail next week.
I mean, at the time, losing the grant writer that we had and then just putting her into that role seemed pretty convenient at the time, but in hindsight, you think it, one, it needs some work.
Yeah, and now we have a year under our belt. I think we have a better feel for how it is. Lindsay obviously has a better feel for how that position works, and, you know, we-
Yeah, I actually had a really good conversation with her about that. Was it yesterday? It was yesterday, in the context of, because I haven't made a huge amount of demonstrable progress, but I've done a lot of information gathering for the capital plan.
Excellent.
And I'm working through taking the fire inputs and turning them into kind of a template for, that I can probably bring into the next meeting, of how to portray the, both the expected expenditures and their categories, as well as the potential, both in-town impact or other funding sources that are under consideration or might be options for those things.
Okay.
Right? So, and that's why I wanted to bring an example in of like one department, so people could see it, see if it makes sense to them, see if it, you know, works as a communication method. And one of the things that she and I spoke about in the context of that was that, like historically speaking, Kathy basically kind of just like trolled the internet constantly, looking for what's the next opportunity, and then would check with the person that applied to you and say, hey, is this something you're interested in me pursuing or not? There wasn't a true, I want to call it conscious plan around what we were pursuing, how we were pursuing it, and what have you, which would-
I popped her a few, which I think I copied you on.
Yeah, and things like that. Like people will send her stuff and say, hey, this looks like it's pertinent, like, and, you know, you know, go ahead and go after it, because we kind of know in the back of our heads it's something that applies to the town, right? But I think one of the things that we want to do is to have at least the grant application process and administrative support that we have around it, be focused on executing that plan, which the department heads have brought to us and that we've, you know, approved and brought to the town, right? I think that's the thing we've kind of lacked, you know. We've been very opportunistic. We've brought a huge amount of money in. A lot of it's been the right money, so I'm not faulting anybody for how we've done it. I'm just saying is that, especially where we have somebody that's basically doing two jobs, right? And historically, the Highway Secretary has only focused on the grant writing for the highway, right? In order to make it easier for her to target and to get that perspective, what I want to do is pull her in once I've gotten at least some of the initial inputs and have her be part of the conversation with the department heads around what there is to actually go after.
Yep.
So, so I think that'll help, because it'll give everyone a framework to hang off of, like, what we're targeting, and have us not, like, maybe pursue something that's really just not really part of the plan. And then we use all the resources following up on, because grants are not-
And I think that's a valid point. If there's something that we identify as a priority to fund-
Right.
And there's another that's a much lesser priority, and they're both grants, and both of them take an equal amount of effort, if you will.
Effort, right.
You know, we should be focusing on the high priority versus the low priority.
Right, so, but, but yeah, I think that fits, I think that conversation fits well in the context of really driving towards an executable plan.
That ends the bullpen for both of those.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that's, that's a biggie right there for general government. As you can see, just going down the list, I've tried to highlight those, and just hitting the highlighted ones. You can see total technology, increasing that about approximately $5,000. Legal services, as you can see, I've bumped it up to $70,000 based upon actuals that we have through end of January. I don't actually have the end of February bill from KP Law yet, but Michelle Rendazzo has told me to prepare for bad news. So I have a feeling we are going to probably end up blowing through our $60,000.
Did you not get a check, I mean, a bill the other day?
No, I thought it was, but it was, it was actually more lawsuit materials from KP Law, just hard copies versus-
What is the bulk of the reason for the increase?
Well, we have, I forget how many lawsuits against us right now. It's one, two, three, four lawsuits pending. We have two MCAT suits or claims that are being defended. We've had literally dozens of open meeting law complaints. Now granted, the majority of those complaints, the response now is being handled in-house, but when they first began, we were seeking, you know, we were seeking a legal counsel. Oh, and we also have an enforcement order appeal that is also being defended, and that's from, obviously, from CONCOM. So we have many different legal-
So the $10,000 might be on the low end, based on?
I agree. I would call that a placeholder right now.
Yeah.
It could easily be 75 or 80 once we get closer to the end of the year. So, so that's it for page one. Page two, we do, we actually do have an assessor in the house, so you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, I do have a question back on the first page.
Yep.
Does the school's quantity include the change in insurance impact?
Well, yes, because that's actually a separate line item. We, the town-
That's right. I wasn't sure if that was baked into the school funds or not. We do, we do put that as-
Deb Boyd is happy to give us that line item.
Yeah, I'm sure she is.
Especially if you're looking at 19 percent increases.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so under wage, clerk wage, you see that one up ever so slightly, and I believe, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that might be like an additional hour or so for Patty.
For Patty, yeah.
But then you'll see a big change is the reduction, $21,000 reduction under assessor expenses from $31,000 last year to $10,000 this year. And I believe the rationale behind this is the current principal assessor or consultant is not really be, he has not been all that involved. And Patty has handled a lot of the workload in-house. Lori has certainly been very helpful to her. But I believe the feeling, and once again, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, the feeling of the board of assessors is that we won't need to spend that much for that principal assessor consulting, for lack of a better term.
The amount that Patty's actually stepped up and doing, and her confidence level is significantly higher than first taking a job, and what a great job she's doing, it's been a huge savings, as well as her interaction with Roy, the consultant.
Yes.
What have we paid to date, you know?
It's a very low amount.
That's minimal. Literally like a couple thousand.
Yeah, I would say under five.
Okay, so next one, you'll see, unfortunate, but it is what it is. You'll see that the, an actuarial assessment for OPEC of $55,000 is included-
$5,500.
Yeah, $5,500, $5,500.
Can we go back to assessor real quick, because I just got another quick question on it?
Yep.
So what would change in a year to make that go up, or make us need the consultant more, like year over year?
Maybe a project, maybe another solar farm or something, but more than likely, nothing's going to make it go up. And it's probably not going to come down anymore, based on now where, really where the number should be. When, when we had two people in the office, Albian, basically full-time, I think he was roughly 35 to 38 hours a week, and Patty as well, I think, I think there was a lot of redundancy there. I think initially, when Al took over, he did a great job finding a lot of the things, being full-time. But I think as it went on, I think there was a lot that-
Well, I think, Rich, actually, you're forgetting about some major efforts that also happened over the last couple of years, including the transfer over in the computer system. That was almost a full-time job unto itself.
Well, that's what I said. I clearly gave Al the credit of doing a good job in what he had done in bringing us forward, i.e. the computers, the different programs that we set forward, and Al was a big instrument. He was instrumental in that, and he brought us right up to date. And now, as a result, we're able to do it with one person, part-time, rather than one full-time and a part-time. I think I gave Al all the credit that he deserved.
Yeah, the only thing I'll caution us is overtime. So we're supposed to do a full assessment of the town on a three-year cycle, right?
It's five now.
Five, and that's what-
They extended it to five.
Twenty-seven is, put it this way, that $10,000 will go up next year.
So we can go up or?
Well, so, so when here's, well, here's the thing, though. It's a five-year cycle. It doesn't have to, the whole town doesn't have to be done on the fifth year. And I think that's one of the conversations that we probably should be having. Where we were in the condition we were in that Al had to catch us up from was the fact that we hadn't done a real reassessment in this town, probably right up until about, I'd say roughly, I don't know, whenever he came in. Because, because in 2010, I can tell you for a fact, the only time they reassessed properties in this town was when they sold. Okay?
Well, we didn't have the professional full-time. It was, for lack of a better word, it was mostly volunteer people that were elected to go in and do the job.
I mean, they were working, they were-
They were getting paid.
They were getting paid, and they were in the office.
But they weren't trained, essentially.
Well, they were. They had been certified by the state, just like any other assessor. So I would, they chose to do whatever they chose to do, right? Al got us into a more modern cycle in getting it done. I just want to make sure that we stay in the-
But that's what-
And I'm sure Patty's going this direction, but it shouldn't bump up hugely in a year, because we're doing the whole town an assessment. We should be doing a fifth of the year, a fifth of the town a year.
That's what we're doing with, that's what we are doing with the consultant, Roy. He's doing a lot of that. So that's why we have.
Isn't that Roy's specialty?
So, so to answer your question, again, no, it shouldn't go up a huge amount, even with the five years coming due on the assessment, unless we're behind on the cycle.
Yeah, I cannot say where we stand for at 5 percent or 50 percent as far as the reassessment. I can certainly ask Patty and Roy, just at least give us an idea of what fiscal year '27 will have looked like.
Yeah.
We've only spent a couple grand, you said?
As of, yeah, yes.
So leave in 10 grand, I mean, gives you some buffer.
And that's why.
That was my concern, was buffer. Okay.
All right, so as I was saying, unfortunately, the actuarial assessment, I tried to fight Sharon or treasurer on that. She said, no, that is a state requirement. We have to do it.
Right, but does it have to be an operational expense, or since it's not every year, do you put it?
I did check with Lori, and the funny thing was, when you had brought up that question, Lori, as sick as it may seem, Lori, she was watching.
I bet.
And she, when I got back up to my office after the meeting, she had an email say, basically, nice try, Beth, but no.
You can't blame me for trying.
So, so yes, unfortunately, yes, we do have to pay that out of operations. And I believe, and I'll double-check with Karen, I think it's, or excuse me, Sharon, every other year, we have to do it.
Okay.
But bottom line is, we do have to pay for it in fiscal year '26. And then we have a new, brand-new item on there, which is a treasurer certification stipends. And the town evidently, several years ago at this point, had approved the master general law to provide this stipends, but no previous treasurer had ever put in for the stipend itself. It's very, very similar. As you can see down below, where Brenda also receives a collector's stipends under a very similar master general law, but that seems to have been an ongoing $1,000 expense for several years at this point. So Sharon's just taking advantage of, I guess, what's available to her by state law and by annual town meeting vote. The next one is, you'll see a fairly significant increase under the collector's expenses. That is 100 percent postage. The, it's based upon actuals. Brenda believes she's probably going to end up going through her existing $8,400 postage for this fiscal year, so she added some to that. And then I believe on July 1st or thereabout, there's going to be another postage increase, which obviously is going to impact it even more significantly.
And I believe she doesn't just do the stamp, she does the envelope, so you might get some increase in that.
Correct. Yes. So she feels confident with the $12,500, the $4,000 increase should cover all of those increases, as well as actual usage. So then for the next page, really pretty much level funding through the rest of that area, and really all the way through to the bottom of general government. The one thing is with municipal heating. Right now, I have it level funded, but we're quite behind in some of our, the billing from our vendor. Karen has been diligently beating on the vendor to get all the invoices up to date, so we actually can, one, pay our, pay the bills that we in fact owe, but also give us a better idea of where we stand with regards to the budget. But at this point, I think we can probably end up level funding unless we get a real surprise invoice at this point.
Print and report does have to go up about $200, though, based on the shares.
Correct, yes. So that then brings us down to the police. As you see, there's some increases in the chief's salary, as well as the wages. Those are contractually based. He has cut back on his overtime, and I believe a segment of that is due to, he now does have Officer Marty, who has been fully trained at this point, and is out on the street, and has been working out very, very well. And the next one down, the fire department, and this one is the one that probably has the most increases that have been requested. And as you can see, the fire wages, the chief has indicated this is based upon the call volume. Once again, he's anticipating fairly high call volume. I believe last year was the all-time high for Brookfield, and he said we're tracking pretty close to that same all-time high. His, the fire chief's salary, he's going up, requesting an increase of $3,000. And he said that's based upon a, granted, an informal survey he's done with regards to area fire chiefs, fire expenses. He's gone up another $3,000, once again, based upon actuals that he's running very close on. Fire testing and recertification, the, the standards keep going up and up. That's pretty much what it comes down to in cases where, he used an example of hoses that had previously would have been deemed fine are no longer passing.
Are not passing.
Yeah.
We had some brush fires.
Yeah.
So we had some brush fires.
And then the next big one is the fixed asset repair and replace. And he's requesting a very, you know, significant $12,000 increase there, which is a 60 percent increase. And I'm wondering if with our new highway hire, John Bonin, being a mechanic and being very skilled and some of those things, if some of those repairs, especially for vehicles-
Could come down.
Could be, perhaps performed in-house. In fact, currently, this Bonin is looking at the truck that was formerly the ice or water, ice rescue vehicle. He has recently, literally just checked that out. It's serviceable. There's some issues with it, but it certainly serves serviceable to be used as an animal control officer vehicle. So we are actively pursuing that right now.
So just to clarify on that, that Peter, the fire chief, would still like it parked out here and still have usage for the fire and be a shared vehicle, but he didn't bring keys over, so.
Correct, yeah, and I do have those keys right now. I have sent an email off to our ACO, an assistant ACO, and let him know the good news.
Good, okay.
So we have that, and also currently, the chief has, as you can see, the backup ambulance. He had indicated, I guess, there are some issues with that. He's pulled it, pretty much pulled it out of service at this point. He is under the assumption that it's probably not worth putting those- He is under the assumption that it's probably not worth putting the repairs into it. He can pick up a very similar, newer, better-conditioned vehicle. His assessment from the town of Amherst, Amherst Fire Department, for $5,000.
I was wondering if there was some used ones out there.
So, he does have his eye on that one. What I had asked him to do is to hold off on anything until John has had a chance to thoroughly check both vehicles. Obviously, the backup ambulance first, make an assessment of that. And then, if his assessment is, yeah, it's not suitable for use, then to take a look at the Amherst department vehicle and see if it's worth the purchase. So, we're putting John to work right away.
No, it's kidding.
He's paying his way right now. So, that's where we're with fire. So, as I said, fire, as you can see, it's a, you know, nearly a $40,000 increase year-over-year, which is 21% increase. So, that's departmentally, at least. Operation-wise, that's the highest.
The one question I do have relative to that, and I know we put some fixed asset repair replace in there, but there's also items that he submitted to me that could potentially- again, and I know that, and Lori can yell at me for recommending that some of this might be more suitable for the warrant. But particularly stuff like equipment hoses, even if they're not passing as well, that's something that lasts 10 years. It's not something that's, depending on what's actually required and what's baked into that, it would make more sense to take some of that out of the operational budget and determine what of it actually qualifies as, you know. If you're only buying it once every five years, even if it's not technically capital, because it's not above the threshold of capital, it still would make more sense to do it out of free cash.
Sure.
I know that's not endless, but let's at least be smart about what we're putting in the reason appropriate versus what we're using that for.
Makes sense. Certainly, worthier discussion. I'm sure I'll hear from Lori.
I'm sure you'll hear from Lori. But, and she, and like she said, she didn't blame me for trying because it was a one-time expense. So, but I think that one, because I think a lot of what's in that fixed asset repair replace, until a few years ago, was not in the operational budget. We just had a- we did have almost an evergreen, similar to our road reconstruction account. We had almost an evergreen warrant article that was for varying amounts, varying years, based on whatever equipment the fire needed. So, the decision was made, I don't know, probably three or four years ago, to put it as a line item instead. I don't see why we couldn't pull some of that back out if we're close, if we need to, in order to sharpen our pencil. So, just want to stick a thumb tack in that one.
And actually, because I am going to be going through this in probably even more detail with Lori next week. So, some things like that, we can certainly fine-tune.
Yeah.
Okay, so further on in this page, it's, you know, once again, a lot of level funding. And if you go to the next page, not 100% levels of funding, but a lot of it. The big difference is, you might see under animal control, and what I am suggesting there and asking the board for consideration, I did just have the discussion with the advisory committee on Tuesday night. I am requesting an increase in the animal control officer's salary from the current $7,500 to $9,000. That is more in keeping with the informal salary survey that I had Karen perform over the last week or two. And I would say it's more around the $10,000 range. It appears to be the yearly stipend. I think Deb has been phenomenally involved in the short time she's been there. I've heard nothing but great things from her, not only from the public, but also from our police department. They're very happy with the work and her response rate. So, I'm suggesting that. And also, a small increase from $750 to $1,000 for the assistant animal control officer. And Ally, Deb has been working with Ally closely. And I think if we let Deb take two or three weeks of vacation, I have all the confidence Ally will be able to step in and take care of that as well. So, then, we have, pretty much down through the end of public safety, is once again, the level funding. That brings us to the bottom of this page, which then starts in on the schools. As I indicated, under our mandatory expenses, what we're seeing there is the $155,000 increase year-over-year, 2.73%, and that includes Tantasca as well as the Brookfield Elementary School. Highway, highway is interesting. Obviously, Kyle is brand-new. So, he had his trial by fire in front of the advisory committee on Tuesday. And we do have some changes, I guess, for lack of a better term. And one of the things that'll really jump out is probably under the seasonal worker. And what we can see, and this is where, actually, yeah. And what we're going to see here in under highway wages, you're going to see where Lindsay's, I guess, full salary comes in. So, the- it looks as if it's a larger increase than what it truly is. So, once again, I think we will flesh that out from an accounting perspective and a preference of the select board at next week's meeting. Snow and ice removal, as Lori said, you'd be a fool to increase that because that is the one fund that you can absolutely positively overspend each and every single year. But if you go up, you can never come down. So, then, we move along. The next pages, you see veterans, they're level funded. Libraries also level funding. The recommission has asked for a slight increase, approximately $1,000. And that really has to do with mostly, I believe, with their true green applications, in which they use true green to fertilize and maintain the quality and condition of the fields.
I thought we stopped doing that for some reason.
Nope, nope. They're still using them.
Okay.
Yep. And obviously, there was an increase there that they're passing through onto the budget. As you can see, historic is also level funding, Memorial Day, cultural, all level funded. Now, as we go into debt and interest, you can see we're kind of jumping up and down. The- we can see fire truck interest is going down $10,000, fire truck principal going down $9,000, but the police station principal's going up $11,000, police station interest is going up $7,000. All told, it's actually a slight reduction, as slight as you can get, $2. So, you're more or less level funded for the debt and interest. Assessments, that's-
Can I ask a question about that, though? So, I thought we moved from annual notes to wrapping up what was left of-
We did, but it's all broken down by each thing.
Yeah, I think it is one note.
It is one note.
But the one note is comprised of many different facets.
But we don't have it broken down.
Okay. At the end of the day, I think it's probably... So, this is going to drive all kinds of questions. And if it's wrapped up into one note, I don't understand how we came out with the breakouts that we came out with. Because it-
I could ask Sharon. She's the one who provided the breakout.
It's nonsensical, right? So, and when that hits the town hall floor and it doesn't make any sense, we're going to talk about it for hours. Okay?
I hear you. I will get a very good one pager from Sharon.
So, let's understand what's going on there, because I don't think you can segregate it that way and claim that this belongs to this thing's principal, this belongs to this thing's interest, when it's all wrapped up in one note. So, there's no way on God's green earth that those numbers floated around like that.
No, I think it's just an allocation.
It's probably the amount that's left on the payment of each particular place, based on the interest at the time, is my gut feel. So, but I hear what you're saying, that it's going to be-
You put that in the water, you put that in the water, and it's going to look like chum and sharks, is what it's going to look like. So, let's get, like, what that relief looks like.
Let's save everyone an hour's worth of their life.
I do not want to spend an hour. I have spent three and a half minutes of my life talking about it. I do not want to spend another three and a half hours talking about it.
Will do. I will have Sharon provide a very succinct and brief explanation as to how that is.
You could probably just have it be one line item and then say what's in that line item.
I think that would be, I think what would make more sense this year, and I know then people will complain because it'll be a different change, okay, is just have total debt, total interest, and just list all of the things that are wrapped up.
I think that's a better way. And we're fully transparent.
Because it is one note, right?
It is one note.
And we're telling them, these are all the things that are on it.
Was the Sommel Dan wrapped into that?
Well, actually, Sommel Dan needs to be its own. That needs to be its own.
Everything else was wrapped in.
Okay. So, I will definitely ask Sharon for a summarization of that.
Please. And even if we wind up restructuring it on the warrant, just so that it doesn't turn into a goat rodeo.
I'll tell her that Beth will buy her lunch if it's good.
I will. Actually, I probably will. Or I'll at least run a sandwich over. I don't know.
Okay. So, now, down to assessments. As you can see, Worcester County Retirement has gone up significantly, $88,000, over 18%. The bad news is, it's going to probably continue for the next few years. Maybe not as bad an increase, but evidently, there was some type of a, I don't know if they're using the term mistake or miscalculation, but something went sideways somewhere down the road in their calculations. And some sharp actuary must have caught it. And there's a significant difference between what Worcester County currently has in their reserves versus what they should have. And as a result, I believe the decision was made by Worcester County Retirement Board to make up that difference, but to do so over several years, so it doesn't hit every town nearly as hard.
Can we get something in writing from them about how many years?
Yes, that I do know Sharon has. That I know Sharon has.
We'll probably want to be able to answer that.
Yeah.
So, Sharon did receive, because originally, I think it was even higher. She was thinking it was going to be somewhere around $120,000.
$128,000.
Yeah. And then, when they kind of fine-tuned their calculations and how they were going to spread it out, they gave us a revised number and they gave us the kind of background information. Or at least, that's the company line.
Fair enough.
Okay. So, then, next, well, then, our favorite here is the group health and life insurance. Now, as you can see, it appears to be a $25,000 reduction, which it in fact will be. But that is fully inclusive of the switch from Maya Health providing the health insurance to the Hampshire Group Insurance Trust. And in fact, just this morning-
Is that including some of the buy-in? Is that why it's only-
Ah, no, not the buy-in. What we're doing here is, the $775 was the amount we pay currently for fiscal year '25. That amount would have gone up significantly in FY '26, based upon their 19.3% increase with the Hampshire Group Insurance Trust. The $750 actually, and I admit, there's a little headroom in there because, one, we really have no idea how everyone's going to choose. My, all my calculations was everyone's going to choose the same exact-
On a higher rate.
Exactly. The key here is if there's-
They might say they're saving money, so they're going to all jump to the PPO.
Absolutely. So, actually, Sharon, Lori and I talked about this, and we agreed, you know what? Let's put in, you know, a good $20,000 or so buffer, just in case, so we don't end up where either a new employee comes on board and says, "Okay, give me, you know, the full-blown PPO family plan." And we didn't plan for it. And now, we end up, towards the end of the year, we are actually in a deficit because we didn't, you know, we planned it to the penny instead of giving ourselves a little buffer. I mean, I guess it could go in either direction, but I think it is prudent to budget with a little bit of that headroom. That's why you see the $750. So, then, you can see a modest increase for the town's Medicaid share. And then, our general insurance went up approximately $10,000 in premiums, about approximately a 5% increase. So, certainly, nothing like the health insurance, but it's still an increase nonetheless. And then, as I had indicated, the water department has asked for a level-funded budget. So, that is your fiscal year '26 budget review in a nutshell. We are still going through department head discussions and presentations with the advisory committee over the next couple of weeks or so. Ambulance is probably going to be a big one. And the rationale behind the ambulance is in discussions between myself and Lori originally, and then with the entire financial management team. One of the things that we are going to suggest and obviously ask the board to support is to have the ambulance funds, whereas right now, it's basically two articles. An article to accept the revenues and an article that has all their expenses. Is instead of doing that, because there's really no transparency, Lori has admitted she has a hard time keeping track of what's going on in between fire and ambulance, and ambulance and fire. And the suggestion is to take ambulance and treat it just like we would the police department, the fire department, the highway department, and have them submit a budget with specific line items and so on and so forth. Put that into the general fund budget, just like any other department, and also take the revenues and really have a separate line item, probably under local receipts would make sense, and we put it there. So, from an operational standpoint, for Donna or Chief Martell or any member of the ambulance service, operationally, it really shouldn't make a difference, but it's going to be a lot easier for us to chat, to track from an accounting standpoint. But it's also going to make it much easier for us to do business analysis. One of the questions I had asked, and granted, I was the chief because he was the one that was present, is what's your collection rate? And they really weren't sure. And I think a lot of that is, you know, because it is so hard to track with the way it's currently done.
We have to be careful.
Where are- where did you-
Okay. I think we have to be careful because the firewall around that budget was established a long time ago for very good reasons.
And Mike Siri has done the research on that. I think it was back in the 90s.
Yeah.
Is when it came up.
Yeah. And it was done, it was done very explicitly because there was a lack of trust that if that money flowed into the general fund, and if the budgeting was, you know, done through the standard processes, that depending on the winds of politics and whoever came into different roles with various and sundry axes to grind, that there would be a potential for a loss in quality of service, right? And you witness it in some of our surrounding towns, where currently, we're one of the few towns that still has advanced life capability, right? And the level of service is significantly higher without it necessarily burdening the town.
Yes.
So, I just want to be, I just want to be cautious of breaking shit that's, trying to fix shit that's not broke. Let's put it that way, okay? Excuse my language, people, but seriously, let's, you know, we have plenty of broken things to fix. Do we really need to fix something that's not broken? I think we could add transparency within, I think we don't have to restructure, personal opinion, okay? And it doesn't mean that I can't sway to jump on board with it. But I think we could add that same level of transparency by an enhancement to the article to call out what's wages, what's expenses, you know. I mean, honestly, how much transparency does somebody have into the highway department? How different is it a line for, it's a line for wages and a line for expenses, all right? Or in most of the departments. I think actually, highway probably has a little bit more than some of the other ones. But I mean, I mean, don't, don't put it under transparency. If there's some accounting reason that it's difficult, fine. If we're not sure about collection rate, you know what? There's a service that does our collections for us. Let's call them and ask them for a collections report.
Well, we're-
The chief isn't the one that's going to have that. That's going to be with whoever does our collections, right? So, I think, one, we're asking the wrong people. And, two, you know- again, let's be careful about what we label it as. It's not transparency. Look at the rest of this budget, and basically you have wage and expense lines. What are we really gaining? Unless there's some, you know, are we gonna get a three thousand dollar break on our accounting services if we make that change? Then I might be on board for it.
I'll convince Lori.
Where are we with, have you heard anything about the, that three-town agreement between Essies, Springfield and Northford?
No, Lori is looking in to see if she can actually find the rest of the thirty-five thousand.
Because we're owed some money.
Yeah, I was gonna say, at this point, I think the confidence is high that we haven't seen that, at least for FY twenty-five.
Yeah.
And once again, if that does show that our ambulance service is at an advanced level and that we're able to provide that.
We're owed more than it's, probably twenty, if not thirty thousand, we're owed.
Oh, I agree.
While we're speaking of the ambulance, I missed the announcement portion.
Oh, right, sorry.
I want to put this out there now that, that we have a great ambulance squad as well as, I got a compliment the other day on Officer Lee Murphy and John Marty, what a great job they did. They had a call and it was not such a, it was a messy call, and our ambulance personnel took care of this elderly person in such a dignified way and cleaned them up and got so much praise as a result, I couldn't help but take the opportunity to give Terry Anderson, and I'm sorry, I didn't get the second name of the paramedic that was there, so I'm just gonna say the whole ambulance squad, because I know they all do a great job. So I want to thank them for getting up in the middle of the night to take care of our elderly people or anyone that's in need, as well as our police department.
Thank you.
And also just FYI, as far as, I have talked in detail with Chief Martell about the proposed change, and he said he was okay with it. And I believe subsequently, he has talked to Donna. I personally haven't talked to Donna. She was, she was out when I talked to Chief Martell, but I believe he's already spoken to her.
I mean, I haven't had the conversation with her for six, seven years, because that's the last time this came up. At the time, there was a lot of concern over it, but that may have changed. I don't know.
All right, so as I said, that's kind of where we stand with regards to our fiscal year twenty-six budget. I don't know if you guys have any questions or specific things you want me to hone in on, other than the ones that we had talked about.
From whatever, some other towns are doing in pretty good shape.
Was it? Yeah. No, the fact, the fact that we're within, you know, anytime you're plus or minus fifty on your first pass, whether you're fifty under or fifty over for the size of our budget, it's at least, it's in that point where you can start wiggling and wedging and figuring out where everything goes.
Yeah, last year, we're in this good a shape.
Yeah, I mean, we're starting, we're starting probably sixty thousand dollars better off than we were last year when we started, before we started shaving and figuring and pencil sharpening and what have you.
An important note is, we have well over six hundred thousand dollars still left in free cash.
Right, and, and, you know, there's some things that always stand out for me. I know that a lot of what's baked into the eighty K for technology this year is one-time expenses.
Sure.
Legitimately one-time expenses, Lori.
Servers, things like that.
You know, so there, you know, some of that could get potentially pulled out if we need some headspace without impacting benefits or services to the town.
You know what, actually, I just thought about that we don't have in here, and I don't think, unless it's in here and I didn't know it, but like Communications Committee, I mean, you guys had talked about doing mailers. Should that be flowed into something?
That would, to probably go under, unless we set up their own line item.
So you might want to talk to Communications and try to figure.
Their own line item might be the most appropriate.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, down with like HanCom and Planning Board and all of them.
Send me an email. What are you looking for?
Did you have a question? Yeah.
So in addition to Communications Committee among the Conservation Commission, and we met yesterday to discuss the fiscal year twenty-two six budget. It seems like we did not get that into you in time.
Okay.
So we did have some requests for training and also access to an agent for conservation.
Oh, right.
So we did have a number that we would suggest for that. It's, the numbers we went through in the meeting yesterday, I think it was around twenty-five hundred for the agent and fifteen hundred to have three commissioners trained. So it came to, and then plus our current.
What was the second number, twenty-five hundred for the agent and how much for the training?
Fifteen hundred for training for three commissioners, the MACC offered a training program for fundamentals, and it's five hundred dollars.
Is that one-time or is that ongoing?
Yeah, it's an eight, it's an eight, eight-session course, and at the end of that, you get fundamentals training. Basically, there's a certification for that, yeah.
Good. I think that's well worked.
So here's a question with that. If anyone leaves and comes on, they should probably get that training too.
Yeah, and the number three of commissioners, that was something that I floated, maybe that could be sort of a recurring expense. I don't know, but currently, we have six commissioners, and none of us are certified as of yet. So it might be sort of a catch-up thing at this point, but maybe, pulling into it in the budget, it might be train a new commissioner every year.
Every year. Yeah, I was gonna say, is to then do five hundred a year going forward after that.
We may need to even keep it up more than that if we have a.
Enough of the turnover.
If the money's there specifically line item for training, and they don't use it, then it just comes back. So I would be in favor of even keeping it fifteen hundred annually, knowing the turnover we had, but specifically for training.
Or just tell people they can't leave.
I'll stick around.
Don't accept the resignation.
All right, yeah, that's it. For Communications, I haven't really talked to the rest of the committee on that. I think I'll reach out to Beth, and we'll get that on our next agenda item. I know we're a little behind the curve on this, so we'll speed up, sort of, with the budget.
Why don't we put a placeholder of a thousand dollars, because I think that's two all-town mailings.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do you want us to knock out a couple of other things? Like minutes or whatever?
Just go right ahead. Do you mind taking a quick recess for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead. Did you have the email that Sharon had sent the other day?
What?
The email that Sharon sent the other day?
What email was it?
That's this one.
Oh, yes, yes, it's in your packet, yep. What do you have in there? Do you not have it in there? No, I saw it, maybe I didn't.
Say, go on, go around.
Yeah, I'll go make a copy, yep. I'll go make a copy. Yeah.
Did you have it in yours?
The email?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In your pocket?
Oh, in the packet? No. That was the other reason why I brought my computer, was because I knew there were email, it gives some support to it.
Thanks, Lori.
Yeah, no problem. Sharon had sent an email. Did you see that email?
What?
Karen's going to make a copy of it now.
I guess I can kind of kick it off, give you a little background, the good news, bad news scenario, as Karen's making the copies. Good news is, myself, Jacob, Sharon and Selectman Chafee met with, to discuss the Apple Country Radio contract, and technically, actually, two contracts, or two components to the project. One is usage of the Green Room by Apple Country Radio, and the other portion is Apple Country Radio's usage of the bell tower and the mezzanine level for their antenna, which is obviously an integral part of their setup. The good news is, we were able to agree to two contracts. The Green Room contract, as I'll refer to it, is a one-year contract. The highlights being it's a one-dollar lease per year with two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollar, I believe, payment for electrical usage. Obviously, we can take a look at that after the one year to see if that equates more or less to the additional electrical usage that we're anticipating. But that number came based upon two years of actuals over at the Gavit Building. So I have fair high level of confidence that that's a fair amount. So that's been agreed to. Sharon's in agreement, I'm in agreement, Rich was in agreement. Jacob is comfortable with it. Sharon did a phenomenal job of actually laying out exactly how Green Room could be, so accommodate not only Apple Country Radio, but also accommodate Jacob and his studio project and the equipment necessary for that. So the other good news is with the mezzanine antenna contract, we were also able to hammer that out. Once again, a one-dollar per year lease, that is a three-year contract. And the rationale behind the three years versus the one year is with the one year, if we do happen to catch that lucky grant where we're able to completely refurbish the Great Hall and enable to utilize it for plays and things along those lines, we do have the flexibility of only having a one-year lease with Apple Country Radio. And who knows? I mean, the two may be able to coexist, but I wanted to have that flexibility for the town to utilize that. Versus three years for the antenna and the mezzanine, that has literally zero impact on the town.
It's probably if you didn't go five years on that.
Agreed, and there's actually very, very easy to extend it for three years. Basically, we just say, yeah, keep it going for another three years and it will automatically renew. So that's the good news. The bad news is what was just handed to you. The contract stipulates the insurance levels that Maya has recommended. I reached out to Maya for their recommendation, explaining the situation. They came back with their recommended, their recommended insurance levels and maximums. Sharon went, and it was not easy, but she was able to finally get some, some premiums with regards to what those levels of insurance would cost Apple Country Radio. And as you can see, they, from Sharon's letter, they're rather pricey. And it's basically, as she had indicated in her email, it's gonna put a financial burden upon Apple Country Radio. Frankly, it's gonna be at least two thousand dollars, she believes potentially more per year for those insurance levels. So I guess the question before the board isn't even necessarily the contract per se, or the length of the contract. As, you know, as indicated, I believe that the contract is fair, it protects the town. But now, everything hinges upon whether or not, and Sharon's ask is whether or not, I guess either certain limits could be reduced or waived so that it becomes more affordable for Apple Country Radio. So that's basically the decision the board has to weigh. Oh. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm sure I'll come up. And just by chance, our cameraman is here to speak on the.
By the way, I heard from Jacob via email, he says this is coming through loud and clear. He's watching it remote.
Excellent.
That's great.
So, yeah, the problem with the insurance bill is I can pay it over time. Most insurance companies will allow that, but there is a price attached to it for each month. Additionally, I've got a major expense just in the fact of moving. Moving the antenna is going to cost anywhere from four to five thousand dollars because they have to take it down from Gavit and bring it here and install it and put it up in the clock tower. Now, I do have a bucket truck that has been, two bucket trucks actually, two people volunteer with their bucket trucks. We do not have to spend two grand on a bucket truck.
Yay.
So there's, that expense is not going to be a factor, but that's a lump sum payment. The antenna guy, as I call him, is not gonna let me pay that over time. Our budget average has been, over the past three years, about eighty-five hundred dollars a year. We operate in a shoestring, no paid staff. Most of our equipment has been paid for, either by myself or through grants and donations. But to have to take a hit of, and actually, it's more like three thousand dollars because the present insurance bill is six hundred nine dollars. If I went by the parameters that Maya wants, the quote that they gave me is one thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars, and that is just for the errors and omissions section. The errors and omissions is required in order to get the two million dollar umbrella coverage that Maya requires. So I can't have one without the other. They have not given me a quote on the umbrella coverage yet. I also don't know how much the increase will be from two million to three million in general liability. So I've got basically errors and omissions, increase in the umbrella, the umbrella is new, and then the increase in general liability. One of those I have a quote for, the other two I have not. If I just went on the basis of the old insurance bill, which is six hundred nine dollars, they've already sent me the notice for that, and add to it the errors and omissions without the other two costs, it comes to twenty-three hundred dollars and twenty-three forty-three for that amount. That basically takes half of the money I put aside for the move. And we're a tiny nonprofit. We haven't been around very long, so mass council grants are out of the question because their minimum budget for a mass council grant is fifty thousand dollars. We're nowhere near that. The two granting organizations in town here, the Brookfield Cultural Council and the Brookfield Community Club, give out their grants at the end of the year. And I've already used last year's community club grant to pay, as I have every year, for our music license premiums, ASCAP BMI and Sessac, which are the licensing agents for all of the artists that we play. And then there are the miscellaneous costs and the cost of the engineer. I have a very good guy lined up. He was recommended to me by my old engineer who now lives in Seattle. His name's Chris Taylor. He has his own low-power station, W I O M, and I highly recommend it. It's out in, out at Springfield. And his rates are ninety-five dollars an hour. And my estimate is that we're gonna need at least six to eight hours of his time to, once the antenna's in place and the cabling is in, to set up the audio stream and to help with the new equipment that we have that we haven't been able to use yet because our build out in Gavit has been interrupted by first COVID and then the eviction notice. So I'm at a, you know, I, it's a conundrum. I'm not sure how I'm gonna be able to afford the insurance that has been recommended, at least as a lump sum item.
What's the, what's the cost impact of taking it as monthly instead of the annual, is it like?
I haven't been able to get that figured out. I looked through all the paperwork they sent me. They did not send, they did give a base amount, but they didn't say how much they would add on. I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot, but.
Eight to ten percent?
Well, yeah, Brad, no, he's the insurance guy here, so.
Well, I need a tax write-off for the year, so.
I honestly don't know that.
It's a nonprofit.
That's right.
And the other factor is that, as you know, the government is in the process, the federal government's in the process of defunding a whole lot of organizations that give federal grants to state grants, which are then passed on to the nonprofits in those states. And it is gonna be very much increased competition for those grants. And I'm afraid most of them are gonna be awarded to human services because they're the ones that have been impacted the most so far by. by the Trump administration's reduction of granting organizations. So I can't predict how much of a fundraising success we're going to have this coming year. You know, normally, I'd be able to predict it based on past performance, but past performance in this case is no guarantee of future performance. So that's why I asked if there was any way that we could either reduce the requirements for the, for the insurance, or just throw it out there, bring it down to what we had before, which was, it didn't have the errors and omissions, it did not have the increased umbrella. And as I've said, the renewal premium currently is $609. We paid for Gavit. We had that whole building at our disposal, with the exception of two small offices in the back, which were locked. We paid $2,100 a year for that whole building. And this insurance covers two small rooms. So that's basically the email I sent in a nutshell. And there are already sunk costs in this, $4,000 for the wiring to date. And that's just materials. Fortunately, Tantasco is able to do the work for us, and they did a splendid job. There's other, there's other improvements we'd like to make to the space. Jacob and I are in conversation about how much of that can come out of his budget, since he's going to be using the space. And if I can digress for a minute. Jacob and I arrived at the idea of sharing the green room simultaneously because he was going to put his command center, as it were, in the all-boards clerk room and share it with them, and it was just going to be a small desk in the back of the room. And I said, why don't you share the green room? And he said, I was going to ask you the same thing. And I pulled out the floor plan and I circled this, I said, you could set up right here. And because he's, he's worked IT for radio stations, so he knows what's involved. I used to be with Cable Access, I know what's involved in his end. And we talked about the operations end of it, and we would not be interfering with each other, even if we're in the same room working simultaneously. So that was, that was, we agreed on that even before we started talking with Ron and Rich.
So. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, go ahead.
So how did we get at these amounts? Can you bring me up the speed on that?
Yeah, it was specifically a recommendation, explained the situation to our Maya representative. And I'll be honest, it took them at least a week, probably more, to come back with that, so they could kind of wrap their head around what was involved. And they did come back with those recommendations.
So could we get a quote from Maya for Sharon? And if it's less than Sharon pay that, like an add-on to our insurance? It's a good question.
An adjuster, an adjuster rent?
Or if the cost is less, or revisit with Maya? But, I mean, it seems hard for me to sit here and say that we would go against what Maya's recommended, right? So that's the hard part.
Right, but I like where you're going with that. I'm sorry to interrupt, but from a standpoint of, and so here's the thing. If it's on our, if it's on our insurance policy as the landlord fundamentally, okay? But we functionally increased the rent to the amount that it was paid, so it was net-net. Granted, it's in essence a year delay because of the way funds work, where that would be a local receipt, and it wouldn't necessarily be directly applied to this year's payment, but that it would be available functionally as part of free cash next year when the payment came through again. There is a small burden on the town, but it's nominal. And at least it would be coming, it would be flowing back. It's just, there'd be a timing cash flow thing with it. And we typically have a little extra in our insurance funds for things like deductibles and what have you.
I would just like to see what they say, and then.
Yeah. I mean, but it could work, I mean, for sure.
I should point out, too, that Ron and I talked about this very early on. And the Maya quote also wanted us to carry auto insurance and workers' comp. And as I pointed out, I also pointed the subject at Gavit because they, their employer said the same thing. We don't have any paid employees. And the Commonwealth does not require workers' comp if you are all volunteer. And as for the auto, I've been coming here for years, my own, under my own power, and I don't see the efficacy of paying for auto liability.
Maybe you should start walking here.
Actually, that would probably be for my health, actually, Brett. But Beth, I'm not quite sure what you're suggesting here as far as.
So, so what I'm, well, what Rich is suggesting, and then I'm seconding fundamentally, is that let's check with Maya of what it would cost for us to just get an addendum to our insurance that covered a tenant on our insurance.
I mean, this could be $10,000. I don't, I don't know, right?
It could be more, it could be more expensive, not less, right? But at least get the, at least get the quotes, right? And see if by having it be functionally a rider on ours, if it would be cheaper. And if it was cheaper, just add that amount into your rent fundamentally, so that you would pay that. You know, you'd be paying the $2,100 for the year, plus whatever that's split out over the year. And it could be paid back on a monthly basis and eventually.
Certainly would ease the burden upfront.
Right.
I should point out that as far as the contract goes, the Maya requirements are in the contract, so that would have to be amended. And, you know, we can talk about that.
Right, but the, yeah, the amendment would pull it out and just indicate that, that your fee included the following coverages through our insurance company.
The other thing is that the requirement was that the town be named as a, I can't find.
Last P.
I'm sorry?
The last P.
I'm not sure. Let me just see this.
Do you know anyone besides Hanover that might be willing to quote this? Because I've had some pretty broad spectrum, like.
Oh, we should, we were supposed to name the town as an additional insured in last P. And that is also in the contract here. We also, as a sidebar, we also added a section about Jacob's sharing the space. And that is also new to this draft.
If we only had an insurance expert.
I don't know how much about that, that insurance.
Wrong type of insurance.
Yeah. But I think you got additional grants, too.
What's that?
I think she could also get additional grants if she needed them.
If the board prefer, we can obviously kind of do a reschedule. I can reach out to Maya.
Yeah.
Explain the situation, see, I guess, one of the.
How much does this impact things if we push this off two weeks with you? Probably not as much as Jacob.
No, it would not as much. I mean, as far as my insurance goes, the renewal date is in late April, early May. So, you know, that, that $609, that's the renewal date they gave for this. The expiration date of the current policy is, and that's going forward, the expiration date of the current policy is the 24th of this month. And that's Gavit, obviously, not here.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, you know, Jacob could obviously move in without my being there, while, you know, while we're waiting, you know.
I'm, I'm comfortable with Ron taking care of this.
Yeah, so I could make a motion to have Ron work through the final details on this contract.
We don't have to wait till the next meeting.
Well, yeah, because he already basically had that. We just had some material adjustments that we had to bring it back here anyways. So, yeah, we're all good with this. I don't see why we can't do that.
Yeah, and that, that way, if we could sort out offline whatever is going to go on with the insurance, and then you can be empowered to sign that document once we're there.
Okay.
Just as long as we meet Maya's requirement, that's fine.
The other, the other thing is that, though, that Hanover wants me to sign on the dotted line for errors and omissions before they give me the numbers for the other two aspects of the insurance company.
That doesn't even sound ethical.
I didn't think it did either, but they, you know, that's what it says on the, on the contract they sent me. Let me see if I have a comment.
Jacob must have a lag, because he texted me what Beth just.
See, our audience, our ratings are better than that.
I don't have it here. But that's what the, myself is the guy I've been working with. That's what he said.
Is there, is there anybody else that offers this type of insurance?
I would tend to think, I mean, I know Hanover's a large company, but I'd be shocked if there were some other insurance providers to try.
I wouldn't know where to go.
I know people you could talk to.
You have, okay. I would welcome those suggestions.
Yeah, because this, well, in particular, I mean, and this isn't on you, Sharon. I think it's, I think it's egregious that they won't give you, like, what the full, all-in policy cost is going to be before you sign a portion of it. That's.
Chicken and egg syndrome.
That's.
How does she know she can sign the contract or afford the contract?
Well, that's one of those things, it's kind of like, it's almost like, well, we know that our price sucks, so we're not going to give you all the information because we don't want you to be able to shop it, right? That's what it sounds like to me.
Yeah.
Right? Here, I'm going to, it, it's like, what is it, like, what is the Texas Hold'em or something? Like, three of your cards are up and two of them are down or something? So, but I'll make a motion that Ron be empowered to work through this with Sharon as long as she can find an acceptable financial arrangement around the insurance that he be empowered to sign a contract on our behalf.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I'm very grateful to the work you've all put into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brad, you could email me the suggestion. And then Ron, we could set up a meeting when you are ready, because I know you've got a full blade.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll call Maya on Monday. Actually, maybe tomorrow.
What's left?
All boards clerk.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Holly Chisholm as all-boards clerk.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
So Ron, so just kind of enlighten us, what happened? How many people did you interview?
Yep, we had, I think it was, I believe it was 15 applications, or people that had expressed interest in the position. My, the search committee, myself, Mike Siri, and Kevin Erkelow, planning board chair. We came down to a short list of four people that we were interested in interviewing. Of the four, two of them backed out last second, were no longer interested in the position. And we did interview two people, Holly, obviously being one of them. It was pretty much unanimous amongst the search committee that Holly literally checked all the boxes that we were looking for. Certainly, office experience, meeting minutes experience, familiarity with the town, familiarity with the functions of each of the boards. In fact, Holly has already, she's proved herself invaluable already just this week when Brenda had a family emergency and she had to be out of the office for a few days. And Holly was there, working with Karen, to accept all the payments. Karen was accepting checks. Holly was accepting cash payments and writing deposits. So basically, kind of proving what we kind of already suspected, that having Holly do the all-boards clerk just adds another tool to our tools.
Well, the other thing I really like about it, too, is she's already a full-time employee, so if we end up needing more hours, we're not going to run into a bind.
Well, the other thing is, I think she's done almost every job in the building at one point or another, so the learning curve won't be there. She'll hit the ground running, and I think that's good, so.
Attending evening meetings is not an issue for her. Office hours are not an issue for her.
Really, she doesn't really need to either, I don't think.
No, I think they, I think the conservation would like her at the meeting, and I think.
Plan boards that they wanted her there.
Really? Kevin also had indicated that was a preference.
But I think it's just a, you know, an asset for things moving forward without a big learning curve.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, Beth, did you?
Nope, good.
And in case there's any concern of hours, Holly currently works, I believe, 26 hours. This will bring her up to 36 hours, so the buffer, if you will, is available there in case needed, without hitting overtime.
All right, I'm good. Thank you, Ron.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Highway liaison change?
I'm going to ask that I step down, and hopefully, one of you will step up to take on to it, at least during my busy season here, so.
Yeah, for sure. So, and actually, I had wanted to spend more time down there anyway because I think that is going to be where a big chunk of our capital planning around the road reconstruction plans are going to be as well. So I know I don't bring the type of technical proficiency around some of those jobs, but from a project planning and that sort of stuff, I think I can give it some value there, so.
I think that's, that's probably a bigger need than the technical, because I think I have all the confidence in the world in Kyle.
Yeah, Kyle has the technical, yeah. Between Kyle having the technical and John being a real mechanic, we're in a good space, so.
So do you want me to make the motion?
You want. I'll make the motion, and I'll make the motion that Beth be the highway liaison.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Acknowledge police department report for February 2025. So we have the report. We acknowledge it received.
Acknowledge that.
Approve select board minutes for 3625.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 3625.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to adjourn.
Yep, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
8:30.
Well done.